Special counsel meeting, April 23rd, 2018. We're looking at 6:03 PM. And, um, let's see here. If I could, let's, um, Charles, if you would please give an invocation.
Yes, sir. Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, God we come now with hearts filled with thanksgiving, thankful Lord God for another day's journey. We thank you for the rain, oh God, and Lord we thank you for all the faith that you've shown with your children on this day, Lord God, for walking with us and being for us what we cannot be for ourselves, but everything that we need you to be. And now, Lord, we just ask that you bless us in a special way as we come together as the governing body of this community. Lord, put us on one accord, give us knowledge and wisdom and understanding, God, to make the best decisions for our community. These blessings we asking Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Stand for the flag. Stand, oh, dear preacher.
Maybe one day.
Bless the reasons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If I could, I'll look for item four, approval of the agenda. If I could have a motion, please. So who? Gambrell has seconded by Simpkins. All right, let's see if I can have here. District one?
Yes.
Um, district two?
Yes.
District four?
District four, yes.
And district six?
Yes.
And district seven?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes unanimously. Um, moving on to number five, Ed Business, second reading admitting the employee falsification procedure manual relating to the town holidays.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Simpkins, seconded by Gambrell. Any discussion on this? We discussed it, nauseam. Okay, I'll call for the vote. District one?
Yes.
And then district two?
Yes.
District four?
District four votes yes.
District six?
Yes.
And district seven?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Second reading admitting employee falsification procedure manual relating to town holidays passes unanimously. Um, do I have a motion to? Thank you very much.
Salute.
To move to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All right, we have Jim Mitchell and Jason Torres. Any discussion of district one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
District four, yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The meeting is adjourned. All righty. Called order on council work session. This is April 23rd, 2018. Uh, let's, uh, do I have a motion approval of the agenda?
Second.
So who, Gambrell, second, Deloach? Any discussion?
I'm just gonna hand it back to Steve, but I'm not gonna read it. I'll scroll the, uh, for the record. And I'll share what's called.
Do you want me to read it in the record?
It's not necessary.
You don't have to read it. You can say I'd like to include this in.
I said I'm putting it in there. I don't want, you know.
Okay.
It's basically, you know, folks say that it's not what you say, it's how you say it. So I thought I'd write it.
That's fine, Steve. Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion?
Discussion, um, on the discussion topics?
Uh, this would be on the approval of the agenda.
On the approval of the agenda?
Or, uh?
This is the regular council agenda?
Yeah, please.
Uh, there's no update? There's no update on the water project on there? Is there a reason for that?
I'll have that at the, uh, regular work session.
Does that mean nothing that's been done since?
Regular council meeting? Regular council meeting?
Regular council meeting in two weeks.
Okay.
Don't have an update on that.
All right.
There is stuff to update on at that meeting.
Up, well, since he opened the door, I'm more concerned about.
I'm, I'm, I'm.
It's about the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Let's keep it there.
I just wanna follow, follow up with what, uh, what we voted on that Megan asked us to, uh, reacquire or reapply for that encroachment permit, and we hadn't heard anything back about it. So I'd like to make that also an update, Megan, on the agenda, if we're gonna be up working on the water.
Uh, for the regular council meeting coming up in May, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was gonna say, why we can't, a meeting is a meeting, why we couldn't be updated?
Um, you know what? We can do this, we can do, we can add whatever we want to, guys, and here's the thing, I'm gonna make the, I'm gonna make it very clear. I've asked, we have asked Teddy to get these things out to us on time. That's gonna be Thursday at five o'clock before the meetings. Now, I want everybody to have their voice heard. I want everybody to get things to Teddy before 4:59 so that he's not rushing around trying to do something. So.
There should be some standing stuff, though, that are on the agenda. Um, we, in the, in the middle of the water project, there's a lot of information that we need to have. That should just be a standing update.
Right. And I didn't think it was the focus of this work session, but certainly, you know, I, I don't disagree with you on that point at all.
Is council's number one priority?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I think it should be.
Um, but help me out, because I don't have a problem having it here tonight, but we just, let's get it done.
Right. Whatever you want, whatever you want to do, but, you know, it just probably takes a minute to say, this is where we are, this is what we're about to do.
I agree. Any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, uh, take a vote. District one?
Yes.
Uh, district two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
District four votes yes.
District six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Agenda is passed. All right. Uh, moving on to item three. Steve, you want to eat some food? You want me to go into recess?
Go ahead, man. You want to go into recess?
Oh, whatever. Do you want me to stop?
You got plenty, man.
Okay, okay. Uh, number three, discussion topics. Uh, A, discussion temporary sign ordinance relating to political signs.
Oh, no, there, he's got the cake.
What?
I didn't print that out for everybody.
Do we have that, so we can display it?
Uh, the, uh.
I have a single copy.
With a single copy? Not part of it.
Do we have the recess?
No, we're having a pause.
Oh, okay, well, Paul, what's the?
Um, what, what we're looking at, or, is, uh, the temporary sign ordinance reading concerning political signs and, and them being scattered across a landscape for months and months and months and months, and I know we're all politicians.
I'm not.
Uh, except for Steve. He is public servant. We are all public servants. Um, but what I, we have no, we have no limits, and Teddy's making a copy of this, on when you can put these signs out, um, strewn among, you know, the trash and everything else in our streets. They then become trash themselves, they get ran over, they get mowed down, whatever. I would like to implement a, a limitation on when these signs can be put out before an election, whether it be a primary or a, uh, your regular, uh, election, your general election. Um, and that's what I would like to propose to council tonight, is that we limit that. Certainly, we wouldn't go into effect for the June primary, but, but we put this in effect before the general election in November.
Says, come on, come.
I, I've got, you know, I've had signs on my road since somewhere around February. I don't remember the exact date. If, if, uh, if those people win in the primary, then, then those signs can stay there till, till November. So those signs will be sitting there for me to mow around, and we need it around for 10 months, basically. Nine months. I think that's too much.
It's way too much.
It's crazy.
Man, who's going to, uh, monitor, uh, people?
I'll personally do it.
Get it? And the hell?
No, I think, I think, if we're not gonna have an ordinance, guys, then, then if we're not gonna enforce ordinances, then we shouldn't have one. I think that has to be done by our code enforcement officer. I think, but, and, and addendum to this, I would like for, uh, staff to, to send a letter to anyone who is on the ballot, and they're going to be on our, you know, inside our municipality, to let them know what the rules are inside our municipality. I think if we're going to work hard on beautification, we're gonna work hard on litter control, this is a piece of.
There's no thinking when you can put them out. It just says five days removed after.
Exactly.
So, I mean, no offense, is it really necessary to put a, a political sign up in January if the election's not till November?
I don't believe so.
So, I mean, our, if we're going to limit?
Many municipalities, we've got some feedback from some other municipalities, and a lot are now 30-day limitation, 30 days before the election.
Well, that makes sense. I mean, why do you want to put them up? Three, four months before?
But we already got just, it's been up since, what, early, early year, the elections for council member, the district, is it, where?
Facebook doesn't care, but I do. I mean, you put anything on Facebook any time you want, you can advertise, you know, eight, 10 months in advance.
Not to mention it gives our guys something else to mow around, plus the citizens have to go around.
It's going to become trash. Litter. And the signs are expensive.
If the code enforcement officer be authorized to remove them, I don't have, I got pizza road.
I would think so, yeah. I, I would think so. I mean, I wouldn't want to put it on, I would, I don't want to put it on anybody else. I think it should be code enforcement officer. I mean, we could put them in a, a central location so people could come pick them up. But my hope is that we send out a letters to anyone running, to anyone on the ballot, so they know that as soon as they sign up, as soon as they register, that inside Facebook Leesville, you have 30, you cannot put a sign out for your election till 30 days before the, the election.
Are you nuts?
Are you nuts? No. Yes, of course, Steve, I'm nuts, but I, I want.
Why would you let it?
Because it's trash, man.
You said?
It's trash.
Prior to the election?
Prior to the election.
So, when you announce that you're running, you can't put your sign out?
Yeah, I'm saying 30 days before the, before the election. That's my suggestion. I've got one, I, I, I've, I'm seeing them in February for something in June, and if they win, then there's gonna be, they'll, they'll be there till November. That's 10 months, nine, 10 months. That's too much.
Yeah, but if you don't know the person.
It doesn't matter. I don't care who he is.
You can get their recognition out here. Look at Kyle Forster. Nobody knew who Kyle was. All you saw was red Kyle Forster signs. And they didn't even say what he was running for. They just said that they.
I'm not limiting their access to Facebook, Twitter, and Snapchat, Instagram. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get rid of the litter in our town. If we're working hard for beautification in our town, why are we going to allow it to be littered by politicians?
I can see after the election, but if, if you, if you can, um, if you have to do your signatures and you, um, apply what a qualify?
I'm not saying you can't walk the streets. I'm not saying you can't hand out a pamphlet. I'm just saying, put that sign on the side of the road more than 30 days.
And the thing is, too, they end up.
Same for everybody.
Ground or messed up, and then they lay there for somebody else to pick up. I, I mean, I totally could find it in town, too, a lot of times.
My problem is the litter.
Yeah.
Problem is I'm mowing around, weed eating around. DOT's not going to. They're gonna run it down. And if they're there from February till November, it's gonna be litter. It's gonna be litter.
I mean, I'm not going down this hill. Trust me.
I'm not asking you to pick them up.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you know, I just think that, um, I'm a small government person, and I think that we are moving more and more toward big government. People move to the country because they don't want to be regulated.
But I'm not gonna let them throw their couch out on the side of the road just because we're in the country. So I'm not gonna let you litter my town.
They're already doing it.
Why are we gonna litter? We're gonna let people litter our town, Steve, because we're out in the country? So they could do, so they can't, they can, they can do, they can do whatever they want?
I'm not fighting against this.
Okay.
I'm just, there's not somewhere I'm gonna fight.
It's not worth to fight that.
Yeah, it's not worth me fighting over. This happened, you got tires.
But I want to hear.
You got, you got tires of litter, litter?
Yep.
And, uh, we stopped.
And that's against the law, too.
Right. And we stopped picking up big trash, um, from folks, and in certain communities, they dump couches and creaks. I've sent, I've sent Teddy pictures of mattresses and.
Yeah.
And couches and tires littering around.
It's a problem. And it's not legal, is it?
No.
It's not, right.
Right. But, you know.
So, this is something that would, this is something that would help clean up the town.
But common sense approach to it would be to go ahead and, and pick it up, but.
That is a common sense approach. I pick up stuff all the time. I pick up stuff, if it's in my yard, it's mine.
We, we arguing about something that I'm not arguing.
Okay. Um, but I mean, I guess that's what I'm, I'm.
You know, we, we, we'll, we'll discuss this one night.
But we're discussing it tonight, it's on the.
Say one night between you and I, then.
I definitely think that five days after is totally appropriate after the election should be gone.
Yeah, that's fine. After the election, that's fine.
But I think that if we do this, I think we should say that we should limit how long a sign stays up. I think nine months is a little excessive, no offense.
Well, I mean, nine months is excessive, but 30 days. If I'm, if I'm a new person, um, like the guy that's running for, against Larry, I mean, nobody knows who this guy is.
Hey, brother.
Hey, guys.
Jeff is here.
Okay. But, I mean.
You see, I couldn't, I didn't know who he was, right? So, but I do see a sign now.
This is not, this is not pointed towards Jeff.
I'm saying, but as a.
I do not point him out. It's not, it's not about him.
I'm saying, I'm saying, as a new candidate, somebody that I don't know, people in my community don't know him, I see his sign, and I will Google him, I see somebody else that had him on Facebook, so I'm, I'm interested in hearing what he has to say. I think it's a disadvantage for him to say, you can only get your message out, your name out, your sign out in our town, the way that people traditionally do that is with yard signs, and you only have 30 days to do that. So nine months is, is a stretch. I agree with that, but I would say 45 days, 60 days, something like that, to give the underdog an opportunity.
Well, I'm not disagree with you. 60 days is probably where I would go with it, just at two, two months before election.
Yeah, that's, that's.
You start doing your campaigning.
In five days, I take my signs up the same night.
They're doing good afterwards.
They're doing good afterwards. Plus, I'd be more embarrassed if I lose.
I think most candidates, they wear signs up in the, uh, expeditions matter after the election. I don't think that's a problem. They may miss one or two.
Right.
You got so many.
I picked them up, too, and just took them back to.
The trick is to bring them all to the leisure center the night before the election, so you know where they are. You chuck them in the yard or something.
I appreciate your perspective, Stephen.
Yeah, I'm just saying, 30 days is just a little bit.
I, again, I'm, I'm, I kind of, I've taken this pendulum, and I'm gonna swing it back here.
Because everybody knew.
And then I want you guys to, you know, help me find something, but 90 days I'm, I'm not for.
Okay.
So I want somewhere in there.
I think the 60 days is reasonable.
45, 60 days.
That's enough, yeah.
That's, that's totally reasonable.
Yeah.
If I'm all right, uh, in them, it is either 45 or 60. Y'all tell me which one to come.
60. 60, 60, that's too much. Two calendar, two calendar.
60?
Everybody okay with 60?
Yeah, I'm doing 60.
I think that's fine. Yeah.
Man, y'all weird.
Packed up tonight, no?
Everybody disagrees.
No.
You don't want to hail either.
Steve, no, I thank you for the perspective. I mean, you've been a public servant longer than I have, so.
Can I ask y'all, can I get your opinion on one more thing related to political signs?
Uh-oh.
Right now, the ordinance says one sign per parcel of property. What if, I've had the question, what if it's a corner parcel and you're on two separate road codes? I know that as a town, when it comes to signage, we treat corner properties as.
Roads are treated.
You, you, you kind of get two because of your, your.
Your two.
Road frontage. I wanted y'all's opinion.
You, you know, he's like, this is kind of, we, Michael, we, this is so much regulation.
I was.
And then this is on the, on, on private property. What about the right of way? I mean, we don't even own the right of way. Why would we, how can we regulate the right of way?
I would like for the, you know, some of the signs that, like, we're not allowing a coffee shop to have a sign out, where they have to come over and get a temporary permit or something like that.
You mean for a campaign?
Not for a campaign, but just to advertise their business. And I want to make sure that we're fair, you know, if we treat, I don't want to treat politicians different than we, what we treat.
They are different. They're, they're different.
It is different, but as far as what's allowed and where we allow them to be.
Well, I mean, I think we, we do too much crazy stuff anyway with, with the, with the signs. People own your own property, you own a business, you want to benefit your sign.
Have your business.
You want to get your sign.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's none of our business, um, where people put their signs, but, um, I would say that if a coffee house, or say Wiz for instance, he has a lot of signs in front of his place, and that's his business.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with stuff like that. I'm just saying, I'm saying if I'm advertising my. But if he put a sign out there and the DOT right of way that says, you know, Wiz's five dollar salads for the next three days.
That's his business. That's not even our.
But it's not, say it's across the street.
I mean, it's in the right of way, it's not our business, because we don't own the right of way. And what we, what we're trying to do is become, uh, model ourselves after a Hilton Head in some exclusive, uh, places in South Carolina with signage and, and uniforming. I can, I mean, I'm not going down that hill.
That ship's already sailed.
Okay, well, I'm saying, I'm, I'm not going down that hill either, but I do, like, I'm more libertarian on, on this issue of, um, you know, not overstressing people and our own people, because we gotta enforce it. You know, and then who's gonna, who, which police officer's gonna go to Wiz's?
Your police officer.
Which code enforcement officer's gonna walk into Wiz's restaurant and write Wiz's ticket because he's got a sign somewhere he shouldn't have a sign?
The ordinance says on private property, doesn't it?
Yeah.
So on your own property, I guess you can put as many out as you, as long as you want to, but not on other folk property.
Well, I understand the right of way, the DOT right of way.
I understand.
You should have the same, you know, I just don't think that we should be sitting there writing tickets to people about political signs that's up to.
I'm not saying write tickets for sure, no.
Well, I mean, then we need to, we, we don't have no teeth and, and, you know, there's no bullets in the gun.
You pull them up, seven bucks a sign, five bucks a sign, whatever.
You better not pull up my signs. That's what's about. I'm, we're gonna have an issue. But I, I think that, um, I'm just gonna think about it, you know, if we want to be a nanny state.
Do we want to be a litter state?
Like, they sign, they're not, it's not for pornography or, you know, nachos or something. It's for political signs. They have a purpose, and then they pull them up. Six of them. Where they put them, I mean, you know, what do you think? What do you think?
Is it, well, first off, I'm, I'm gladly off of an opinion, but is it appropriate for me off of an opinion, Mr. Mayor?
If the mayor allows, he can do anything.
Sure.
Give your opinion. He's eating, he, we relax over here. Yeah.
You, you hit on it. It's name recognition. It's name recognition. I want to get my name out of the positive plan. First one out of the gate wins. The next thing I ask myself is, there's a lot of focus on political signs, but as I drive through your town, I see, it's like the calling, long distance calling, unlimited minutes, prepaid cell phones, real estate signs. Why is it just political signs? Why is it just?
It's not. It's not.
That, that's all you address right now, but if it's gonna be the signs, it's going to be the signs.
What I'm addressing right now is, and absolutely right, I'm very pro-business, but what I'm addressing right now is, we have no limitations on the number of days before the election, so that's what I'm addressing specifically. And it should be fair, because I have a coffee shop owner, they can't put her sign out for a limited amount of time, and she has to come and get a permit for it. It's not a political sign, it's a business sign. So that's what I'm doing, trying to rein the politicians in, so that we're not.
What about the other signs on the corners that we, that haven't been addressed?
We have a code enforcement officer.
Honestly, we're down a code enforcement officer right now, and they normally ride out and pull those out on the ground. So there's normally probably not as many as what you're seeing right now, but we've been down code enforcement two or three weeks.
Almost four.
Almost four weeks now, and so they probably have compiled it a little bit.
And then the next thing, with the proposed ordinance change, does it impede any legal rights to post a sign? Is there any precedent out there? Has anybody researched it?
Yeah, we have researched it, and I think if anybody wants to sue the town, and they're a politician and want to sue the town because they can't put out their sign And then the next thing, with the proposed ordinance change, does it impede any legal rights to post a sign? Is there any precedent out there? Has anybody researched it?
Yeah, we have researched it, and I think if anybody wants to sue the town, and their politician, they wanna sue the town because they can't put out their sign in sixty days, they're not gonna sue away. But I mean, but that's what you're asking, are we gonna get sued? There's a couple of, there's a couple of long shot type cases that are out there, but I don't see it as an issue. I mean, if, if you sue the town as a politician, I think you're gonna lose your campaign.
I would never entertain that idea. When it comes to lawsuits, I'd run the other direction.
Right, exactly.
I think creating consistency is the key here. What's fair for one is fair for all, that being consistent.
Right, but I, I feel like, I feel like right now, those political signs are unfair to business, right? Business is on a different, they're being treated differently. They're limited in, the politicians are not. The politicians should be limited. All right, so sixty days.
Sixty days prior to election.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Just one more point.
Yeah.
I personally had signs pulled up, torn up, and thrown on the ground. I had no recourse. I had no idea who did it.
That's sad.
First, my first school board election, I did too. I know who did it. I saw him on the back of the truck. They were taking them. I had no recourse.
They were stealing my recourse.
No, there's none, but...
Pop them in the mouth.
But, I mean, there was none, and again, this isn't about, I, I wanna, again, this goes back to pulling it in a little bit.
There's a law regarding that.
Yeah, but you don't know who it is.
Taking them or putting them, taking them down.
Vandalizing somebody's...
Got private property.
Taking them up.
Got private property, yes. I have private property, they're gonna be in the video. Destroy the venue, private property, yes.
But as Lance said, you would have to see them do it or have a surveillance camera or something, and, and nobody probably would invest in that.
Right. But I think it would be really nice if, if, if Town Hall could send out a letter to anyone who signs up, who registers to run, and let them know what our rules are, what our ordinance says about the signs, political signs. I think we should be doing that, educate people who are running.
I'm calling it.
That's the weirdest thing.
It's, I'm calling it, where, it's not Bob, is it on?
What's wrong?
Can't find it.
You lost your phone.
It's the same when you get young.
Heaven's singing in your hand.
It might be homeless, Steve, who knows?
Uh, so sixty days, any other discussion?
Did we, did we say that they can put it on the right of way?
I think we must leave that the same. It's, it's in there now.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
I think that tip is attached.
Yeah, I, I don't think we're gonna try, I, I just wanna limit the number of days. I mean, I'm not gonna make our code enforcement officer get out of tax math. All right, any other discussion on this? Welcome Shirley. You all right, hon?
I'm here.
All righty.
Do we have a motion on this or vote or what?
Um, we need to know, we need, uh, I don't think we need a motion or a vote or anything. We need, uh, the board is gonna bring the ordinance to us. Change with sixty days. Put it inside there. We'll get it to Chris. Uh, moving on to discussion, uh, three B, discussion of hospitality tax. Sir Luckadoo, if you'll please, uh, give us your presentation, sir.
All right, June fifth, twenty seventeen, this is the, uh, presentation that was given to the previous council. I know a number of you have expressed interest in the hospitality tax and what information was given to the previous council regarding hospitality tax. So, tonight, wanted to work in this presentation. Uh, when we get to the timeline part, the timeline part is the same thing we gave you previous council, so I don't want you to think that, that I'll, you are gonna see the presentation day saw. So, the timeline's not updated because we really haven't received guidance on, on how to move with that, so. First thing, start with what is the purpose of a hospitality tax? Some, a lot of this information was taken from...
You growl one of them? I'm looking for something thrilled with that.
A lot of communities have used it to spur community and economic development, um, through their terrorism that they currently have. Uh, they support tourism-related expenses and costs that, that are on local government entities that they may currently be paying. Uh, this can be used towards those expenses and costs. It's to repair and improve tourism-related infrastructure. That could be facilities, roads, bridges, um, also water and sewer that serves a particular tourist destination or event. And to promote and advertise the tourism-related activities that you have in your community. Or it can be used to promote and advertise future tourism-related event that you may have in your town, excuse me. So, what is a hospitality tax? Simply put, it's two percent sales tax on prepared meals and beverages. Without going into all of the other stuff that it has on there. And it's used for on-site consumption, but also for prepared food and beverage that is taken from the site to go, for example. Who are those required to collect the hospitality tax? Number one is restaurants, um, bars, lounges, private clubs, hotels, motels, caterers, grocery stores, convenience stores. Um, convenience stores, if they sell prepared or modified food or beverage, if you walk into a gas station and you grab a twenty ounce bottle of Mountain Dew out of the cooler, you won't pay a two percent on that, but if you grab a Mountain Dew from a fountain machine, you would pay a two percent on that. The act of a fountain machine making that drink on the side mixing the carbonation with the syrup is considered a prepared beverage. So, how can the funds be spent? Uh, tourism-related buildings, civic centers, coliseums, aquariums. If we decided we want to build an aquarium here in town, we could do so. Tourism-related cultural, recreational, historic facilities. We can improve our beach access and renourishment programs that we have with that. It could be spent on highways, roads, bridges, streets, that provides access to our tourism-related events. I know that, uh, the town of Lexington is, their primary focus for their hospitality tax funds is the improvement of all their roadways and their traffic situation in downtown Lexington, uh, because pretty much all the roads lead to the areas where they have tourism. Advertisement promotion, um, water and sewer, again. So, what are examples of items that are subject to the hos- yes, sir?
Can you, can you go back to the last one I said?
Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate a little bit on the historic, uh, facility, how that might be used, hospitality on the money?
Right, well, a lot of people acquire their historic facilities, a lot of cities will acquire historic facilities in town, and they'll put the hospitality tax money into it and make them museums, or they'll make it part of tourism-related facilities for their community. But simply because we have a historic home in town, doesn't mean that if we don't own it, that we go and start putting money into it. What's meant by that is a lot of cities, uh, will acquire...
Like the old depot or Haynes Auditorium.
Depot, Haynes Auditorium, if, if the old school was standing. The post office on the corner of Pine and Brute, places like that.
Which old one would be a perfect poultry museum? Just a poultry town, with no poultry museum.
Y'all hear that? For the record, he wants a poultry museum. We'll make sure, we'll make sure any committee gets that on the list. Listen, I, I won't ride through and highlight all the donuts and pastries and oven fried rotisserie chickens, but these are just some of the items that are subject to a hospitality tax. Your nachos and hot dogs. So, what's exempt from a hospitality tax? Can or bottled drinks. Like I said, if you go into a store, buy a can or bottled drink that was not prepared there, you do not pay a hospitality tax on it. Prepackaged foodies. Let me give you an example. If I walk into Walmart and there's a table with Krispy Kreme donuts, be more specific, chocolate ice cream is my favorite. Sitting right there on the table, you do not pay a hospitality tax on that Krispy, pack of Krispy Kreme donuts. But if you walk over to the Walmart deli and you grab the donuts that were prepared by that deli, then you pay a two percent on that because it was prepared on site.
And something on the honor system?
A whole lot of honor system, yes, sir. I mean, there, I will tell you, there is no way to go and hawk every single thing, um, that's, that's out there that's got the potential. I can tell you, there's a lot of, this is two-fold. You've got some places that say it's not worth the battle or the, uh, trying to program everything in our point-of-sale system, everything's gonna be nine percent. You got some people that say...
But is that legal?
Not necessarily. That, if, if they got it on things that's not, here's the thing. Again, back to, uh, back to the honor system. We're gonna work with the establishments that are supposed to impose the hospitality. We will make sure that they are clear. They have to report to us what they take in for hospitality tax. Restaurants are easy. You walk through the door, it's two percent.
Right, but you're asking teenagers that run these gas stations to differentiate between a fountain soda and...
Well, well, I'll say this, if you go to Quick Carry, if you go to Quick Carry, Quick Carry does not use a point-of-sale system. They have a punch-in.
That's what I'm saying.
For transaction. So, someone like that, we're gonna have to work with a little bit harder to make sure they're clear.
It'd be tough if my kids eliminate Stan, but I think it...
Well, I'm just saying, but, you know, you're talking about teenagers that really do this kinda stuff. They might go care.
They aren't working on the tax, the, the taxes there anyway.
Right, I'm saying, but they're not gonna say, if they don't have a point-of-sale, um, software...
Are they figuring seven percent too?
Right, they're not gonna do it.
They're not doing it.
You're thinking like, oh, well, Mark.
The business owners.
Well, yeah, some people are gonna do it because they have the, the US...
The point-of-sale system, so Mom and Pops has a more complex point-of-sale system. It is pre-programmed items, they push them button. It, but Quick Carry, you still have to punch a dollar thirty-nine.
Right.
Plus the cheese is twenty cent, plus, I mean, they're punching everything in. A place like that, we're gonna have to work a lot harder with to make sure it's clear.
And you're gonna have, you're gonna have plenty of people, some people are doing it, some people not doing it.
And, but, you're right, there's a lot of honor system in this, and, and there's no way for us to catch one hundred percent who's doing what. Uh, so, bags of chips, any alcohol, so if you walk in a grocery store or you walk into a gas station and you buy alcoholic beverage and you leave with it, there, there's no two percent hospitality on that, but if you go into a bar and consume it there, there's two percent on that. So, how was the H tax collected? It's similar to state sales tax in that it's a pass-through tax to the customer. Uh, the businesses will charge the two percent tax and will, will remit that back. So, for example, I use San Jose's this time. San Jose's currently charges a seven percent sales tax when you go to eat there. However, if, if y'all choose to do this, they would then charge a nine percent sales tax. At the end of the month, they would remit seven percent to state, two percent, I mean, yeah, two percent to the town. Again, for restaurants, this is very simple and easy. Uh, where, where it starts to get trickier is when you have combined uses, gas stations, delis, and grocery stores. But I can tell you that most of your grocery stores are used to doing this in other areas, so their corporate can help them through this process. We had it set up originally that businesses will remit by the twentieth of the following month their hospitality tax to the town. Uh, the town will provide, we would provide coupon books, so each business would get, um, a pack of coupon books that we would send out annually, January, February, January through December. All they have to do is, is gross amount and amount remitted to the town and someone signs it. Along with their check, they would send that back.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't follow the fiscal year, budget year with the coupon books? Or based on a budget process from July one to June thirty?
We could, we could follow fiscal year. That would be no problem. So, the cost of a H tax is simple, it's two cent for every dollar spent on prepared food and drinks. So, a couple of examples. If a dinner is ten dollars and fifty cent now, at seven percent sales tax, they pay seventy-four cent. Their total's eleven twenty-four. With the N H tax, take the same thing, they would pay eleven dollars and forty-five cent for that ten dollar and fifty cent meal. Um, but, right here, we kinda use the family of four eating out. Same example, forty-four dollars and ninety-four cent versus forty-five dollars and seventy-eight cents. So, who has the N H tax? Right now, there are two hundred and seventeen municipalities in the state, over a hundred and twenty-five, or a hundred and twenty-five plus. There are a couple other cities that were talking about it. I'm not sure if they actually went through with it. We are one of five municipalities our size or larger than us that don't have the Venus, the hospitality tax. Every other city is small, smaller, and most of the municipalities are way smaller than us. There's many municipalities that have three hundred people, five hundred people, a thousand people, that a lot of them don't even have a restaurant.
Aiken?
Aiken has it.
Lexington?
Has it. Johnston, Edgefield has it.
Newberry?
Newberry has it. And Irma was one of the ones that was moving towards implementation of that. I just don't know if they have gone as far as to adopt it at this point.
Why, why is that important?
I, I just think it shows that...
To me? Is it, oh, because if I got a license and I'm already paying it. And I mean, I eat here as much as I can, but sometimes I do have to go there, so I grab something.
You don't wanna be telling the people that, well, we do because everybody else...
No, 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 I'm just saying, I'm paying it.
The point of the slide's not to sell that we need to do it because everybody else does. It's just trying to paint a picture that this is not an uncommon tax, uh, to areas right here around us, but statewide. I mean, I have to ask a question, a question I ask myself is why are we one of five cities our size or larger that don't have it? Everybody else has it. I, that's the question I ask myself. And I don't know the answer to that, but I can tell you everyone talks about the benefits of it and what it does for their cities and their towns and what they're able to do with that. So, Lexington County down here at the bottom, uh, these are the places within Lexington County that don't have it. Everyone else does. So, there's the snap, shot map.
Fourteen municipalities in Lexington County. And how many don't have it? Go back. All right, okay.
Right.
Pretty much the majority of them don't.
So, five have it, and we're the fourth largest.
Right, but the majority don't have it.
You gotta look at, you gotta look at some of these areas. So, if you look at, uh, Springdale, do they have any restaurants that you know of in Springdale?
They have.
They have, they have three or four, but if you compare...
You wanna talk to Michael Mitchell about this?
I talked to him.
Well, I'm not saying, I'm not...
Lizards, Steak and Bojangles, the Country Cook.
There's not very many. South Congry, I know they have what, the, the South Congry House of Pizza, the other, the other place.
Yeah, but if you, if you, if you go by that kinda schematic, you also gotta look at, you know, this is supposed to be for tourism, it's a tax on tourists. We don't have tourists.
It's a tax for tourism, not on tourists.
But you, you, the, the, the concept is that you're not taxing your people necessarily, you're taxing people who come into, in, uh, visit the town as tourists. We don't have tourists. We have, we, we have neighbors, we have neighbors, but we don't have tourists.
I think, Ken, I think this is where we've had a large debate. I, I classify dining, dining for this town is tourism. People come here to eat and leave.
They, they neighbors, yeah, but, but these are our neighbors, they're not tourists, they're not, this is not a destination spot.
A tourist is a person who comes into your town for a specific purpose for a short period of time and leaves. That is the definition of this special state.
But when you, next time somebody's going for, uh, going on vacation, I'm not gonna be like, hey, let's go to Big Bird.
But here's the thing, we have a fine art center that brings in numerous people for certain events.
How many?
We have a state band competition, we have the poultry festival, we have multiple town events that draw people in for...
There's probably ten different dance recitals.
I think they have, yeah, uh, I think they have close to twenty dance recitals a year that bring people in from outside our town. I mean, that's...
How many people? What dance recital? What are you talking about?
Uh, hundreds and hundreds of people.
C C patches, the kids.
Okay, well, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I'm not going down that hill either.
There's numerous things that bring people into this town.
I mean, you already know how I feel about it.
I know how you feel about it. We've had about five hundred conversations about it, but that's, that's good. So, revenue of approximately four hundred thousand a year, guys, and I'll tell you, that is, that is lowballing the number. Um, that is kinda the bottom line number that I'm giving, based right now on last year's reported growth. Just restaurants alone were four hundred and twenty-five thousand, just restaurants. That didn't include Walmart's deli, Balo's deli, KJIGA's deli, Quick Carry's hot dogs, or Mom and Pop's kitchen, all those places that... Mom and Pops, when they send us a business license, it is not separated restaurant sales from grocery sales, the fuel sales. It's all on them to one, so I can't tell you what their kitchen is doing, to be able to include that number in this. Just restaurants alone were upwards to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, in talking with, um, numerous city managers, uh, most cities see between five and ten percent increase in their hospitality tax revenues on an annual basis.
Based on what?
Based on the fact that when they get the money in, they create new opportunities which brings more people in, and by bringing more people in, more people...
You're talking about businesses?
They're, they're, they're... Their budgeted hospitality tax increases five to ten percent each year.
My business make more money.
They should make.
It, it does. It, it's proven that most... If the hospitality tax revenue is increasing at five to ten percent per year on average for these cities, that means restaurants on average are making five to ten percent more money.
I'd love to see that documentation on that. I seriously, I would like to see...
Go to, go to your cities that post their budgets online. Uh, I mean, that's what we look at a lot, too, is go and study other people's budget.
The municipal association have this information?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I'd like to see that.
All right. So, just to bring it back to our, our strategic priority connections, when you go through our strategic plan, there's many things listed in there. What we tried to do is draw out those things that maybe in a small park can indirectly affect that strategic plan, or it may have a large direct impact on that. Uh, more family oriented events, your downtown revitalization, improvement of your town parks, um, your youth activities, improving connections between your downtown districts. We talked about this walkability, bikeability study and having that done. Uh, certainly, anything we do that creates a, a bike path or across our town, that's got the potential to bring people in, use it. I, I think about how many people go into the Casey West Columbia River Wall to use that path that don't live in Casey or West Columbia. They go down there to bike, they go down here to run and do those things. Those are some of the more direct impact things that hospitality tax can, can play a part in. But, uh, your traffic issues, some of your traffic issues, like I said, Lexington is doing all traffic-related things with their hospitality tax funds. If there are roads that lead up to our tourism-related places...
Come on, this Chili's Barbecue.
Any of the roads within the area of the poultry festival, but here's the thing, any of the roads within the area of the poultry festival can be improved.
Okay.
Do you, do you not build a baseball park before you have a baseball team? I mean, do you not build a basketball court before you have a basketball team?
And here's something I'll say.
Well, here's, here's, here's what my concern is. A lot of that tourism, um, activity is gonna be in Leedsville and not on Howard Street. What, what kinda tourism you got on Howard Street?
Hey, all right. We're gonna keep the whole town in focus and really focus on the areas that are struggling with, with, with...
Sheely's is gonna bring in the money, Steve.
I did not say that. I did not say that.
Steve's gonna bring in, um, um, Sheely's gonna, is gonna bring in the money.
Okay, and see, that's when, that's when my, that's when my issue's gonna be, is that if the squeaky wheel or the, the, the big cat, right? Everybody's paying it, right? But if the, if the, uh, if the results and the money is going towards Chili's Barbecue because they bring in the most tourism, then I'm gonna have a problem with that because, I'm just saying, hold on, I'm just saying, that's just what the mayor just said. That's what he said. That's what she, I'm talking about the roads in, in the, in the project.
We control it. We're not giving this money to DOT. We're not...
But that's what, but what you said was...
We control it. DOT's not getting the money.
I can only go about what you said.
Columbia's not getting the money, Washington DC's not getting the money. This is ours for our, for our town.
I'm not arguing that point. All I'm saying is that when you do something in Leedsville with the hospitality tax money, you need to do something in all of the baseball on Howard Street. you need to do something in all of Batesburg on Howard Street, Maple Street.
Steve, this is for all of us.
Okay, well, you're telling, that's not, that's not-
Councilman McCain, have you ever had the idea for an event in the Batesburg area?
Oh, my phone is, uh, at the house.
Don't assume so.
I wanted to tell everybody's timing.
No, have you, have you ever had the idea for a particular kind of event in the downtown Batesburg area?
For Batesburg, yeah, we, uh, me and Jim were working on, uh, October Fest, maybe not this year, but maybe-
That could be a hospitality tax supportive thing.
Please don't say that, because- But every time Ted goes to a meeting, if somebody comes up with an idea, this could be for Batesburg Towne's Tax.
It can. I don't say it if it can't.
Okay, but, alright, like you say, I'm not dying on this hill, y'all, I'm just putting my ideas out there. I'm not dying on this hill.
Well, I think it's very good that you say that, and I think it's, I don't think there's anyone here that wants to pet projects with Tom, in Tommy Sheely's backyard.
I'm just saying about Tommy Sheely, y'all, y'all don't get that name, that would be, I did not mention Tommy Sheely. It's already bad enough I got, uh, to deal with Wiz tonight. But, um, all I'm saying is that let's make sure that, you know, we, we're not doing-
Who gonna handle the money?
Well, see, that's a long thing.
Who gonna handle the project?
Let's let him get through this first.
You gonna hire somebody to hire, to do that?
That's not his decision, that's-
Oh, that's council's decision.
But, um, I just wanna make sure that it's even handed, because part of, um, I mean, I'm not asking to jump into this, you mind, Mayor?
Well, I, do we wanna get, give him a chance to get to the tail end of this presentation?
We have questions to comment.
I mean, yeah. I mean, I want, I wanna hear, I know what you have to say, but I, I want everyone to hear it.
Okay. I don't know, but-
I do, I know. I, well, we've, we've spoken.
We've just thrown out- Ideas on how this money can be, can be focused. This is not all encompassing, this is not set in stone. This was just areas that we said, we can use it towards wayfinding signage and entrance signs coming into our town, park improvements, advertising and marketing the events in our town to get more people to come here. Additional funds for the current events and festivals that we have, creating, I, I don't know how many times I've heard movie nights, either in parks or shut the main, uh, uh, area down and let's set up the big screen and have movie nights. Uh, streetscaping projects, redevelopment of the Batesburg downtown area, uh, facade improvement within the town, just more beautification. So what are some early focus? Uh, additional park improvements, a playground set like that's about two hundred thousand dollars, just to give you an idea. That's a two hundred thousand dollar playground set. So if we wanna improve our, the playground equipment that we have in our parks, which-
How many parks?
This is in the, this is in the Wilson Street Park right now. And we've actually got a couple other pieces that-
How many parks you got?
Um, the movie night's in the park again, I, we had one, I think the Dreamcatchers put one on, uh, this past fall. And for the first time ever, they, they did that movie night, and it was well attended. But like any, like any of our town events, after the first one, there comes a period of crowd.
Primary schools put one over there that built a park, they've done it a couple times, I mean, back.
But to hire, there's companies that come and they set all this up with the speakers and everything, it's about two thousand dollars a movie. By the time you buy copyrights for the movies, the equi, they come out with the equipment, set it up, and turnkey operation. The town doesn't have to lay a finger on anything to do it. Christmas lights, y'all, for three years at Christmas time, I have got beat down about Christmas lights. That is a five hundred dollar, uh, light right there. Snowflake light.
Each.
Five hundred each.
And it go up over price.
David's here tonight, Jeremy, how many we throwing away a year?
Uh, I'll go by the five.
Throwing away about five a year, they're just toasted, they're done. Our Christmas lights now were bought by youth.
How old are they?
Over twenty years old, twenty five years old. But a tree like this, now, if you look at the retail price, it's twenty something thousand, we can get it for, I believe they quoted us fourteen thousand, fifteen thousand dollars roughly. These are thirty-four foot, when we talk about a community Christmas tree, why can't we work on having one on the Batesburg side of town, one on the Leedsville side of town, and maybe one right here at town hall? Ideas, I'm not saying it has to be that way, but we can have multiple big thirty-four foot big lit Christmas trees with new, new lights going down the power poles throughout town. We do static displays. Uh, I will tell you, we priced out sixty thousand, that was gonna be, I, I don't have the quote in front of me, but it was numerous snowflake lights with a thirty-four foot Christmas tree like that. This is a metal frame structure with panels that you screw on.
In both districts.
You plug, bro.
Well, or whatever, we just-
Well, that was starting with just one.
You know, I mean, both different centers, yeah, wherever.
But again, one month of H-Tax applies to two of them plus some of those. We talked about signage, uh, had the opportunity to go to Greenwood the other day, uh, for a workshop. It's nice to have wayfinding signage in your banners, uh, up and down your main street corridors, creates a very nice appealing touch to those downtown areas. We have a lake, I believe eleven major, eleven major roads leading into town, eleven roads that lead into our town. Two spots have entrance signs coming in. I've had, uh, numerous people tell me, I didn't know, people that do this type of work, people that, that do town related type services, that had said, y'all need more town entrance signs. I didn't know when I was in your town limits. I didn't know, I should know when I'm coming into Batesburg or Leedsville. So it doesn't, we don't have to do signs like the two we have right now, but just something that lets people know they're coming into Batesburg or Leedsville. Burn it up, is it hung up? Justin, hey, that's good. I think it just hung up a little bit. Um, again, I, I, this can be an early focus, it don't have to be, just putting it out there that if we want, if council wants to form a committee and you wanna start looking at what are potential projects out there, because you've got this fund now, you've got this stream of money coming in, you can always look at building a, a master plan with those funds, with projects that are listed out with cost estimates, so that you know how to budget your funds on a year-to-year basis. If we wanted to do a plaza some, like this somewhere, we could have a study done, this may be eight thousand dollars to have a study done, but it gives you a cost estimate towards that. Uh, timelines and everything that you need to do. If we wanted to have some project study to understand what those costs are with itemized so that we could phase some of these projects, we can do that. So just looking right now, what are some of the general fund expenses that we have that, that we are using towards hospitality tax that could be used supplemented by hospitality? Right now, overtime related expenses that we have for poultry festival and other events is about twenty-five thousand a year. That's coming out of our general fund towards our events. Uh, facility maintenance and park maintenance is around sixteen thousand dollars a year towards the upkeep and maintenance of our parks and park facilities. Utilities of lighting our parks up, around twelve thousand a year. And we're spending right at three thousand a year, that is our, our town events lineup, three thousand. And I can tell you, that's become not enough money, based on the growth that we've had of our town events. The Ed Hunt, National Night Out, the Fall Festival, three thousand has become inevitable.
What kind of fall festival you have?
The Halloween-
Trick or treat, um, main fall festival.
What's telling me nothing down in Batesburg? Which, which one of those events is done in Batesburg, in my district? In your district, your district?
We can build a place with H-Tax to put them, and we could have one down there.
Why you got to build something, why have already, why have already been being done?
No, it's a good point though.
Right, well, I'm saying, okay, you just-
Well, you ain't got H-Tax now, you're still doing it. So what's, what's, what's kinda bringing it to Batesburg, doing something in Batesburg?
I mean, what location was?
I think a lot of its location was-
Seriously, where, where would you recommend a event like that go? You can do that at the Perry, uh, Park, in the west. The, the Park on Wilson Street.
I think, I think it comes down to parking.
You can do something downtown, uh, uh, Batesburg, if there's a, uh, if there's a will to do it, you can do it. I'm, I'm saying, but a lot of things, if this is-
No, you don't agree, you oughta quit.
He can agree, um, well, all I'm saying is that a lot of things that we do is Leedsville 10th, wait. Okay, and I'm-
I think it's because of facilities there, Steve, and I don't think it's because it's Leedsville baseball, it's because the facility's sitting there.
Okay, and what about the, the train depot, that's not a good facility, you can't do a movie night in that park?
No, I think- Parking becomes more of an issue for so many events.
You can park all up and down, um, uh, Howard Street right there, this, I mean, you can park on the side of the, of the park, you can park-
You could do a movie night in the horse pasture over here off of twenty-three. I mean, right in the middle, closer to Walmart, I mean, you could do that too.
But why not just do a small bearing event in, in Batesburg?
I'm not saying you can't, but you're, you're, but you're implying, you're implying that, that things aren't being done in Batesburg because, specifically because it's Batesburg, that's what you're implying.
I didn't say that.
You didn't say it, I didn't say you said it, I said you're implying it.
Well, that's how you interpret it, what I'm saying, I'm just stating the fact that these things are done in Leedsville. That's all I said, now, you, you take, you feel it, you feel some kind of way about that, but that's the truth.
My opinion is, it's because it's facility related.
So you're saying the Batesburg is not good enough?
No, or that, no, you're, I did not say that.
What are you saying, you can't do Ed Street Hunt in Batesville?
That's not what I said.
What are you saying?
I said that, that, that facility, that, that park, that facility simply draws people to it from all over our municipality.
You have things in that park.
But the bottom line is that H-Tax-
I do, I do, Steve, to develop things in the Batesburg district. I go to high school on Tuesdays and Thursdays and workout. I do, I go there and run, I, I don't, I don't understand it.
Yeah, I just, the H-Tax would allow us the means to develop that kind of capability in Batesburg. I think, I think Councilman McCain is correct, that the general perception of the Batesburg district is that we get short shrift. For whatever reason, I mean, it's just general perception. I think we need to do something to turn that around, and I think H-Tax would allow us to help do that.
Okay, well, and like I said, I'm not gonna die on this hill, all I'm saying is that everything that has been proposed could be done, should be done, has a, a weight towards Leedsville because that's where Sheely's is, that's where the park is, that's where, okay, so-
I think it's a general perception.
Right, that's all I'm saying, nobody needs to be defensive, you don't need to be defensive about that.
I think there, I think there's gonna be a huge amount done down there. That's, that, there's a huge need in the Batesburg business district to turn it around.
But, but you know, before you turn it around, you gotta understand, you gotta accept the fact that, that is a perception, it's not just my perception, it's a perception of, you know, you have half the people in the town of Batesburg or Leedsville, they're in Batesburg. And they don't see, they don't see town, um, funds spent in Batesburg.
And this would give us an opportunity to do that.
Okay, well, we need to do that and, uh, and in, uh, uh, now, and if you do, uh, H-Tax, I don't think that, anyway.
Yes, yes and yes, what are we arguing about?
Well, I mean, but you're not, you're saying yes, but what are you gonna do in Batesburg? Which one of these events that we do now are you gonna do in Batesburg?
Create new dance.
Okay, which, which do events, which do events? H-Tax aside, are you gonna do in my district, in, uh, Spousa District, and then Councilman Ethers District?
You're saying leave H-Tax out of the equation?
Leave H-Tax out, I mean, you-
I don't have funds to do things more than what I'm doing now.
It's, it's a couple of things that you, that you like to say, you like to say Casey, H-Tax, uh, Dreamcatchers.
So let's put Halloween, uh, Halloween in the park down there, I don't know, in, in the other park, is that what you're saying?
No, you can do it downtown Batesburg, you don't have to limit, Batesburg, downtown Batesburg is huge. It's got plenty of parking, you just gotta have a desire to do it. You have a church right there, uh, at the, at the end of, of, uh, uh, Number One, you can check, um, you can block off that whole entire area.
Steve, I don't think anybody's arguing with you.
That, that's our, um, goal.
I understand, I'm, I'm not saying, I'm not-
Why don't you all come up with some ideas as to how to improve the Batesburg district?
I do, I do, I do. I have that, we're gonna get to that in a minute, I hope, but all I'm saying is, this is my point, we can do a lot of things in the future. My point is that the things that we're doing now are weighted towards Leedsville.
Limited funds, limited funds.
Okay, I'm just saying, that's not, that's not the limited fund, he has the money to do it, he's doing it. His National, his National Night Out used to be at the high school, and now it's at Leedsville in the park. Okay, so all I'm saying is that if you're gonna do something in Leedsville, let's do something in Batesburg. You got Twin City Park there.
I understand that.
If you just need a real understanding.
The Leedsville district is more prosperous than the Batesburg, that, in my opinion, is because those businesses down there have invested more money into their, uh, uh, portion of the town down there.
What business is invested in, in, uh, in that park?
Not that, well, in the park?
Yeah, in, in, in the, where the H-Tax is.
There's been business money going.
Okay, wait, wait, who's?
Tommy Sheely's put a lot in.
Okay, who else?
Brian Sheely.
Okay, alright, okay, so, anyway, all I'm saying, we're not going, let's-
Steve, I think we agree with you.
Let's finish with this, cause I, I, I need to-
We want what you want.
Okay, I'm just saying, you want what I want going forward, what you're saying is, if we do H-Tax, if we do H-Tax, then we can do what you want. All I'm saying is with the resources we have now, he's got sixteen thousand dollars in the budget for parks, I have to send a picture to you-
Well, that includes utilities.
Okay, what I'm saying, but I have to send a picture to you, Ted, and Charles, to get the grass cut in that park, in Wilson Street Park. You got, you got grass going up through the same, where the kids can't even use the park. You know, the grass ankle high in that park over there, okay? So you don't have that same issue in the Leedsville park. Alright, that's all I'm saying, let's just, let's treat everybody on an equal, uh, footing when it comes to, to parks, it's not being done now. And I'm bringing that to the table, it's not being done now, and I don't have no faith that all of a sudden you get four hundred thousand dollars if none of the grass go get cut in Wilson Street Park. That's all I'm saying. Proceed.
Alright. Uh, so sixteen thousand annually is budgeted towards parks and rec, it would take twenty-five years of that budgeting to match one year of H-Tax revenue. Uh, aging facilities and equipment, the Christmas lights, the cafeteria hangs, Train Depot, uh, a lot of our facilities that we have now, the park equipment at Wilson Street Park and Lee's College Park, the hundreds of thousands worth of renovations and upgrades. A lot of the park equipment's being deadlined and it's so old that there's not parts made for those anymore, so we have to remove those pieces of equipment that are, that are no longer, uh, have the parts made for them.
How many pieces of equipment have we removed from Leedsville Park?
Oh, well, I can get you to answer that, but I know we've had a few pieces, the ADA handicap swing is one of them, that it was so old, they didn't make parts.
You don't even have an ADA handicap swing in Wilson Park?
And I can't, I can't answer why that was never installed.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just trying to point, point out the discrepancy because apparently-
We don't have bathrooms at Wilson Street Park, we don't have bathrooms at the park.
Alright.
We don't have a walking track at Wilson Street Park, we don't want a walking track put in there. Uh, there's a lot that I wanna see put over there that's currently not there. So implementation, state law requires a positive majority vote by council, in other words, a majority of members present when considered. Um, ordinance should be passed with a rollout phase, and community involvement is essential, and last year, we did go through a stakeholder input session where all the people who would be imposing this tax were asked to come and meet with us so that we could present this information to them, as well, we did a community input session, uh, for the public. And did a Facebook Live segment on the, on the public input session.
What about business owners, did you talk to business owners, did you?
We had one business owner show up. To, well, and your corporate places are used to doing it, it, it's nothing new to them, uh. Most of the mom and pops, we did have a couple of people that, that called or caught me on the way in the door, they received a letter, had a quick question or two, but that wasn't about it. But one, one of the Chinese restaurants showed up.
So they received a letter, you sent, or staff sent a letter to?
Inviting them to come to the stakeholder input session.
If they like a participation means what to you, how do you interpret that?
I don't know how to interpret that, I don't know whether to interpret that as apathy, or whether to interpret that as we've been expecting it, or whether to do that as, as so far out left field, I don't know what to think. I, I'm saying.
Are you serious, I mean, are you really serious?
I'm saying, I don't know how to take it, them not showing up, tell me how I should take it.
I'm saying we don't time out.
You grown man, you know what you think, I can't tell you what to take.
I just told you what I thought.
You don't know, that's what you just said.
I was saying, go forward, go forward.
Reasons why, I don't know why they chose.
Forward, I'd like to know.
I can't read their mind, so I don't know why they didn't.
We don't want you to read that, we don't want you to read the mind, but I would like to know if, uh, the majority of the businesses are for this, against this. If they are gonna be compliant with it, I mean, we need to know that, don't you think we need to know that? I mean, that's something that you would need to know as, as far as the council making the decisions, I mean, I would personally challenge council to put this on a referendum for the, uh, citizens to decide. Um, you know, if it's something that we all believe in, and, and we wanna, um, you know, we think that our, our, our people, our constituents want this, put it on a referendum, and let them decide. In November, we got election coming in November, make the case to the people and let them decide. You know, 'cause right now, we, we talking about making a decision, and staff doesn't even know if the business community, uh, supports it. So how do we know if, if the people, and our constituents support it?
Can we ask our chamber president if he's received feedback from the?
Say again?
Can we ask our chamber president if he's received feedback?
I wanna see, I don't, I mean, I can hear from.
I know, you went out and talked to him.
We can hear from Mike Taylor, but I wanna see, I don't know why Mike Taylor would be a substitute for a town staff employment. I mean, input, you have hard data, you just gave us hard data about what you said that the, uh.
You, you two were on council last time, you guys went through this whole process, I attended these meetings, so I.
Do you know why we didn't vote on it?
I.
Do you know why we didn't vote on it?
I'm assuming that no one wanted to take the, take the tax hit.
Right, nobody, we, the, the people in our, in our districts, the people in this town are not in favor.
They don't want, they don't want any improvements in our town, they don't want, they don't want anything that improves our town.
Ask them, man.
What percentage, what percentage of the fifty-six hundred would you say against it?
Yeah, why not? If you put it on a referendum, then you have, then you have a mandate to do all the things that Ted wants to do.
It's not about what Ted wants to do, it's about what his committee and.
Council sets the budget.
What council wants to do, he doesn't get to control it, we do.
Okay.
And we're all working together to improve the town.
I'm not saying, that's, that's, that's something totally different, all I'm saying is, let the people, if the people say, if the people in a referendum say, um, this is what we want council to do, and if you believe that.
We can't pass a two cent gas tax in this state to, to fix roads.
So what you're saying is you don't trust the people?
What you're.
You don't trust the people?
What you're saying is you don't want us to move forward.
No, what I'm saying is, I want the people in this town to decide if they wanna have another tax. If they wanna have parks, if they wanna have all these beautiful things that, that we say that we wanna do, right?
No one wants a tax, Steve, no one's gonna accept a tax.
So you're asking, you're asking me about for something that our people don't want, don't want?
Maybe, maybe not.
It's not really an optional tax.
It's an optional tax.
I'm saying, you have to be somewhere.
I go, I cook my food at home.
So you wanna penalize people for eating out?
I'm not saying penalize, this is, this is a setting that you.
It's not optional, and if it is optional, why not let the people decide? What's the problem with putting it on a referendum and letting your constituents decide?
It won't pass.
Okay, so now you ask the council to do something that the people don't want, that's fine, that's it.
Listen, what you're saying is, if, if you let the, if you let people, people decide, it won't pass. But you gonna put it to the council, and the council gonna pass it, that's what you're saying.
The gas tax, if it won't pass either.
Man, you just lost your mind.
That, that's just fine, I mean, that's what you're saying, as the mayor of town, you wanna do something that the people don't want, doesn't.
No, that's not it.
What is?
That's not, that's, that's not it, that's not what I'm saying, you're putting work on it, I really don't appreciate it.
Okay, well, explain it to them.
Why don't we all just go out in our respective districts and find out what our people in our district?
Well, we might not just let them vote, let them vote.
Exactly.
Let the people vote.
You know, ladies and gentlemen, that, that's why the people elected us to represent them, we are.
But they should still have input.
They do.
Well, go to your people, get their input in your district.
My people don't want it.
We, they, they elected us to make these decisions for them.
They will enjoy the park, they'll enjoy the basketball court, they'll enjoy the improvements in the Bates, Batesburg business.
They'll let them give a chance to vote for it.
Enjoy all of it.
You believe that?
Yeah, I do believe that, I believe it.
Then why not give them a choice to, to vote?
I don't know if they believe it.
So if we put a two hundred thousand dollar playground set at Twin City Park, you're saying they wouldn't play on it?
You wanna roll the dice.
No, I'm, what I'm saying to you is something very fundamental, that we need to have, just like, uh, you need to have council approval before you do the things that you do, council is accountable to the people that elected them. And when you put something like this out there on the table, we should get input from the people.
And we already have, you went through this process, I was part of it, no.
Every time we wanna do a billage increase, should people have to vote on that?
Did you invite everyone from, where was everyone, where was everyone from your district? Where was everyone from your district?
First of all.
I know it'll pass, I know it'll pass in the district I live in, it'll pass in the district I live in, but you're not listening to me, you're letting me talk.
Point of order, first of all, you said where were my people, my people were at French Church, missionary Baptist Church, when Ted did the presentation.
They're from your district.
Is that correct? Is that correct? So my folks did come out to the, to the meeting, and they heard from Ted, and they heard from, uh, Gregory, Gregory Sprouse. What I'm hearing you say is that you don't think this is gonna pass, that the people don't want it, but you want it doing anyway, that's why I get you.
That's not.
And that's fine.
I would say this, and.
That's fine.
We don't take every time we wanna do a billage increase out to the voters to vote.
This is not a billage increase, it's like Megan said, this is an optional thing, this is an optional tax. It's optional for the people, for the constituents, whether to eat out or don't eat out, and it's optional for council, whether we do this or we don't.
Whether or not we move the town forward.
And it's, it's optional to do a tax, you wanna keep the town, you wanna keep the town down.
No, I wanna make the case to the people. I wanna make the case to your people.
You're telling me you wanna keep the town down.
You said that's what the people want.
No, that's what you want.
No, you said the people wanna agree to it, you said that you don't wanna take it to the people, 'cause they wanna agree to it, so you think the people wanna keep the town down?
No, I don't, I disagree, I think they're actually gonna pass it.
They are gonna pass it.
They are gonna pass it.
Well, then put it on a referendum.
So, because we don't need it.
Put it on a referendum then.
We don't need it on a.
Put it on a referendum.
A turn of order has been called, and I think that all councilmen has had a chance to voice their, uh, opinions on this matter, I think we should move forward.
Okay, again, this was the timeline that was given, that, but just to show you how we were progressing through. June fifth, we gave an H tax presentation to council, uh, we did the initial public notification of consideration press release. Uh, we scheduled our information sessions and QA with the general public in those input sessions here at Town Hall. Uh, July tenth, council, uh, we brought it up for first reading that night, it did get removed from the agenda that night uh, with a motion and a second, and, uh, I think it was almost unanimous approval, if not unanimous approval, to take it off that night. Um, more specifically, talking about putting together committees and trying to come up with a list of projects and things like that. Uh, had that have not occurred, we, second reading would have been in August, on August fourteenth. Uh, we would have began working in August with the business to ensure compliance and readiness to, to move forward to the collection of H tax. And the notice of H tax adoption would have been sent to all the businesses in August. September, uh, we would have had a second reading of a modified budget with the H tax, back to this. This would have had a, uh, first reading of an H tax, and then the modified budget first reading would have been in August. September, second reading, we would have continued working with the businesses to ensure their compliance and readiness. October first, businesses would have began assessing the hospitality tax, and, uh, on November twentieth, we would have took the first collection. So at the end of October, they would have compiled what they did gross for the month, and by November twentieth, what was done in October would have needed to be remitted back to the town.
So we're in our, actually, our second year of talking about, uh, the H tax. So everybody has had a chance to give input their.
But they not getting a chance to vote on it, and you, we, we talking about support at the table that we about to divvy up.
Their voices, their vote.
Okay, and you got that right.
Um, uh, just showing you, we talked about, uh, Lewis and M's project, uh, the Women's Society and BBA project last meeting. Here was a buil- building that imploded, this was something that the Town of Liberty did with their hospitality tax funds. Went in and just created a, an aesthetically pleasing area, uh, where that building had fallen in. This was an old parking lot that was just used sporadically by people, and Camden, they came in and built a plaza with hospitality tax funds. Let, couple last points, it's paid by all visitors coming into our community to eat, it relieves all financial burden from being directly on our taxpayers and businesses, and all the funds stay low.
Well, it, paid for is a little stretch, it's paid, paid for by everybody who uses, uh, the, uh, uh, the items that, the, that generates the H tax, so that's local and business.
Right, and, and that, it, that's what I was saying, it's paid by all the visitors coming into our community to eat. Uh, as well as the people that live here, but also everybody that's coming in and eating, they're, they're paying towards the beautification improvements of our parks and improvement of our events, and, uh, it takes, it takes the sole burden from being off of our taxpayers. Solely on our taxpayers' backs. And I think one of the biggest points is all the funds stay here, it doesn't go to state and come through us and they keep proportion. It comes directly to us and it all stays here.
You said it takes the burden off of our taxpayers, right?
Right.
Yeah, but we not doing it now.
Not doing what now?
Any of the stuff that you put in that slide, we're not doing it now, so what do you mean it takes the burden off of us?
So if we, if we wanted to do the things that were in this slide, and we didn't have a hospitality tax, you're gonna increase the taxes?
No, I'm saying.
To do it, you would have to increase the taxes on our tax base to do it.
We hadn't done that, you've already increased the taxes just about every year, um, in fees, either taxes or fees every year, but.
We haven't raised anything, if we do nothing this year, this will be the third year in a row we've done nothing.
Back like four or five years to be able to raise taxes, but that's not the issue there. But anyway, there, uh, I wanted to get to this, uh, since he's done, to get to this, uh, uh, the statement that I had.
While he's reading that, tell that, I don't understand.
I mean, I don't, I'm not gonna read it, but I just wanna, um, you know, we had a citizen come to council, uh, a couple of weeks ago, well, early in the month, and she talked about um, the aesthetics of the town, and now that Hardee's has left downtown, downtown Batesburg district. You can really see, coming from the police department, through that downtown corridor, until you get to uh, McDonald's, or, uh, Goodies, or whatever, the first impression that you get into Batesburg is terrible. You know, and we, as a council, we said that, you know, I was sitting there, uh, the night, I don't know how many folks, uh, read it. Is this on the agenda for tonight?
I'm not sure, what, Steve, I don't know what we're, I mean, are you?
That's fine, I'm just going back, you said I would have a chance to talk about this, when I was talking about the agenda.
Well, I said we would enter it into the record over here, I didn't say we would add it to the agenda, I mean, I, I want, uh, let's put it on someplace, but not.
Okay, I'm, I'm, okay, we can, we can table, I don't know.
Well, I mean, I, Steve, what am I supposed to do, you know, everybody.
It takes two minutes to say that we need to.
Do I give everybody their two minutes, three minutes, four minutes, what do we all need, everybody need, I mean, come on. Is he at the end of his presentation?
He's not.
I moved, it'd take a five minute break. I'd suck.
Bathroom break.
Whatever kind of break.
Let's run through.
Alright, we get it started, y'all, get started. Alright, just real quick, I wanted to give y'all a quick update on where we were at, uh, from a budget standpoint. We're getting very close to being able to come to you guys with, with the budget. Uh, right now, we are awaiting some April figures and some mid-May revenues, waiting for some. We get our county, Lexington County tax money, comes in about the seventeenth of each month. Right now, when I'm looking at the property tax, the vehicle taxes, and a lot of those taxes that we get from Lexington County, I'm different from where I was last year. And sometimes this can fluctuate depending on the year, one month we get a big check in March, the next year that big check might come in April. Then back to Mars, then back to April, I'm waiting, I, I really would like to get to the mid-May before I start to finalize some of those tax revenues for the general funds out, uh, because some of our numbers are off pretty substantially from last year. Um, we are also awaiting some, uh, contractual numbers for the SRO, um, and talking to them about taking over the high school with, with SRO this year, um, there's a couple of options that are on the table for that. So, once we solidify those numbers, we can get those into the budget. And we're also still working out with advance disposal, um, about the renewal information, and what effects that'll have on the budget numbers. As far as money coming in each month from people paying additionally to that, that number's going to be different, amount coming in and going out, so. Yes, sir.
Is it budget related?
It is, it just costs us money.
Okay.
Okay, what interest do we have in having a school resource officer? That is the Lexington District Three, they got way more money than we have, that's their responsibility. Ninety percent of the world, probably more than half of the kids that are in Lexington Three are not in the town limits. So why is that, uh, an expense that the town, uh, wants to, to, to bear?
Well, what we're going to is a seventy-five, twenty-five.
Why are we in it anyway, that's the county's responsibility, that's Lexington District Three's responsibility.
County is pulling out of all schools that are within municipalities.
Okay, but that's not our problem, that's Lexington Three's issue. And we, you, the SRO officer that I see in the middle school does not sit in the front, they're not there to prevent uh, an incident from happening, what they're doing in there, I don't know, I don't even care, but that is Lexington District Three issue.
Personally, my child's in the school, my personal opinion, I like the SRAs, 'cause my child's in that school.
Okay, well, you, you think that if we don't.
That's my personal thing.
If you don't think, you think that if we don't put the bill for that, that the, the county, that the school district is not gonna protect your child?
Who's gonna protect, and the county's not, and if we're not doing.
Then that's their responsibility to hire a security for, they wanna pay, they wanna pay one hundred percent, that's their responsibility, that's not Ted Lucky Doo's responsibility. And that's not just council's responsibility, it's not the taxpayer's responsibility, like I said, probably about sixty-five percent of those kids are not even in the municipality of Batesburg, Leesville.
Do we not protect them when they come inside our town?
We do protect them when they come inside our town, but that is Lexington District Three budget item, that should be their budget item, that's their responsibility.
If a bus is hijacked between the middle school and the primary school, do we not protect those children?
It, we do, it's just like, it's just like if something, a fire happens outside of the Batesburg town limits, we go out there and help them too. But that's not our, our primary responsibility, that's all I'm saying.
It was my understanding that SRO officer works as needed in conjunction with the local police department, and I think that's why.
It is the local police department, it is the local police department, it's our police officer that's, that's in there.
Well, that's why we contribute to the cause.
But we, uh, what I'm saying is that we shouldn't have a police officer in there, that's Lexington District Three's responsibility to secure their schools, okay, where they are.
This municipality, our primary responsibility is to protect, the, to provide public safety for the citizens, meaning police.
Yeah, for the citizens, but.
So your students are not your citizens?
No, most of them are not.
My daughter's not a citizen, his kids are your citizen.
My son goes there, my son goes there. My son goes there, my son goes there.
Exactly, so that's our job to protect them.
Sixty-five to seventy percent of those kids are not in our, uh, municipality. And that's the, it's not our job, it's the Lexington District Three job to protect them.
The high school, it is our responsibility to protect them.
Well, that's your opinion, I don't, I don't agree.
Is that in town limits?
What?
Is the primary school, the high school?
Yeah, but that's not our, that should be coming from the Lexington Three's budget. Totally, if you wanna use the Batesburg-Leesville police officer, I don't have any problem with it, but Lexington District Three should pay for it.
I, I think, Councilman King, the word of seventy-five, twenty-five comes from is, seven, nine months out of twelve months in a year, that SRO is in school. That's that seventy-five percent. The other three months that they're not in school, that school is out, that is where the twenty-five percent comes in. That's where your seventy-five, 'cause we get them, should they pay one-hundred percent of cost of that officer? And then the entire summer, we get them debt-free at no cost? That's where your seventy-five, twenty-five comes in.
Still, that's not, that's not debt-free Ted. And, and that's, that's one of the, the issues. That's why the police department is forty-eight percent of our budget. Okay, and you're not willing to cut, um, where, where you need to be cut, but you willing to, to tax people.
Well, SRO, I guarantee this, SRO is paying by taxes at the school district too.
Okay, I was saying, but that's coming out of their budget, not our budget.
Right, it's coming out of the taxpayers, whether it's here or there. It, we're paying for it, we're all paying for it. Uh, my question is, so the seventy-five, twenty-five has to do with the entire salary of that person?
Right, fringe benefits.
Okay. And they're paying seventy-five of that salary and fringe and we're paying twenty-five of that salary and fringe because it's nine months versus the three months?
That's how it breaks down.
Okay.
All right. And that's just recently, it started out.
Right, it's been, yeah, it's been fifty-fifty. This, this renewal is the seventy-five, twenty-five.
Okay.
So we make a progress.
I guess we're ready to handle our own business.
So some quick budget information, just, just for y'all. Hit on some of this briefly the last time. We have three funds. There are eighteen total budgets within these three funds to which there are three hundred and seventy-one line items in our budget that we have to review each of those line items when we're doing it. Uh, the three funds are the general utility and victims assistance funds. The budgets, there are three revenue. You got your utility revenue, general fund revenue, and your victims assistance revenue budget. Then you got two non-departmental budgets, one for utility fund and general fund. And then you have thirteen departmental budgets that consist of water, sewer, utility maintenance crew, police, fire, uh, so forth. So that's thirteen budgets, court. So as of, as of, as of this afternoon, of the three hundred and seventy-one total line items, fifty-four of them are not complete. Three hundred and seventeen have initial budget information. Of those fifty-four, the majority of those fall within these categories that, again, I talked about May seventeenth, getting the next tax check from, from the county for taxes, uh, that are paid and getting that tax money in. That will allow us to provide a more solid budgetary number to you guys once that money is, comes into the town. Uh, we are awaiting the end of the month on a more solid number for business license. Business license is one of those that, one year, April may be a big year. The next year, may may be the bigger year. It fluctuates up and down on when this money comes in. April is the deadline month for business license renewal, but that does not mean that we always get it by April. Sometimes people flow in the first week or two of May a little bit late. Uh, still haven't heard from SC and G on our twenty-eighteen franchise amount. This is over four hundred thousand dollars in revenue, but the number does fluctuate up and down a little bit. I've emailed them, I'm still waiting to see what that franchise fee amount's gonna be. Again, trying to finalize the SRO contract budgetary numbers and finalizing the plan for a trash contract and how we're gonna soli-, uh, treat the salute accounting residents with regards to, are we going to do the twelve-ten or whatever that number ends up being? And county sends us a bill for the eight thousand, and we just invoice advance? Or do we charge the twelve-ten and then we take so much, so many cents all each month per account? And that makes it up over the course of a year? Those are the things that we're still trying to figure out when it ends. And that can affect the budgetary amount. Uh, still waiting on a final number from Gregory Sprouse regarding the comprehensive plan. Don't have that hard budgetary number from him yet.